Counsel if you will come to order, it is 6:36 and the council will convene in a joint section with MUD 1. President Moss.
The Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number 1 Board of Directors is now convened with a special session, the time is 6:37, and we do have a quorum. I would like to at this time ask Mayor Sanders if he would please be chairman of the joint meeting.
All right. Thank you, President Moss. I'm going to once again begin our joint session by announcing the fact that our public hearing that is scheduled to start at 7:00 PM may be delayed slightly, so just be aware of that. First of all, I'd like to thank the MUD staff and directors for the joint meeting and for their willingness to adjust your schedule for us to be able to square in our new council member and get him seated before the meeting and for all of the changes that that entailed. Our first item is, was item number four on our agenda, I don't know about your agenda, Jim, is it?
Number one.
Number one on the MUD agenda. And it says, "Consider and take appropriate action regarding future planning for water and wastewater infrastructure and services, including Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number 1 and town-owned buildings and facilities located within the Trophy Club Municipal District, Utility District Number 1 district boundaries, including discussion on the terms of an interlocal agreement." I asked to place this item on our joint meeting because at that time, the council was in negotiations with Mr. Beck about placing Town Hall and Police Building on PD-30. And along with that were the discussions about how tax increment financing funds that were approved for that land could be used to build infrastructure. We then came to the realization that the customary way of development would be that if Mr. Beck developed all of PD-26 at some point, once inspection was done and everything was completed, that infrastructure of water and sewer would be in fact turned over to the MUD because it's in the MUD district. If the town were to finance it through a TIRS-TIF arrangement, we then ran into the problem of, well, we needed to own it until the debt was paid off. So that created this issue about ownership of what you operate. We have that a little bit today with the PID, we've kind of got a blueprint for how that could work, and my concern was that I didn't want it to be a surprise to the MUD that that might happen. And so we needed to do that in open session to say, if in fact, that negotiation were to pick back up or something similar to that, that we would be in that situation there if we were going to build infrastructure, water, wastewater, roads, things that were typically going to go to the MUD once they were inspected and finished, we would have to do an interlocal agreement to somehow allow the town to own it until the debt was paid off. And so I just wanted to be able to bring that up to you, you could ask questions about it, we have no proposal at this time to give you, but at least it would not be the first time of you hearing it if we had such a proposal. So, any of you have any questions about that?
I'd like to, you know, for the town, or I guess the town since you're bringing it up, to do further research on the requirement for ownership because I've seen some scenarios where the town has bonded property or developed it and the requirement to keep the infrastructure was not a requirement for the bond, so if you would just research that a little bit further.
Do you have any specifics?
I'll send you an email on it.
Okay, all right.
Nick, I have a question for you.
Yes. Jim Thomas.
I haven't sat down and done the math, so this is really kind of off the top of my head. TIRS monies for PD-30 are going to be an amount of something, you know, I don't know what the something's going to be. You know, you guys are going to have expenses for a whole bunch of somethings, you know, you're going to repair the front entrance coming in, you're probably going to change the medians out, you're going to do a whole bunch of stuff inside of the area. So I would say, or I would ask of you, that spend your TIRS money on non-pipes in the ground. Let the developer put the pipes in the ground, let the pipes come on over to us, and we have, we have no issues at all. Use your money for things on top of the ground where you're probably not going to have enough to do it anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anybody else?
Jennifer, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything.
So let me paint one more scenario for you that was there. Part of that discussion was potentially the construction of a civic slash conference center on that land. That could be funded via hotel occupancy tax, at least in some form. We currently have two hotels on the ground generating that, there's a third that's got one story somewhat built, there is a fourth in that same general area over by the medical building that had, that final plating has been approved. And so we are, we are already at that point, and in the plans for PD-30 was an additional hotel. So you would have all this revenue that could be used to build a municipal facility, and there's limits as to what you can do with it. So part of what was also being looked at was that money being used for the parts of infrastructure that were maybe needed for that building. So all of that is, Jim, is kind of open, we don't really have a plan, there were just lots of discussions with Mr. Beck about that, and I just wanted to be able to say to the MUD openly, there have been discussions about that, so that you can begin to offer your opinions, Kevin's research, whatever that might be, to kind of help us get through that. And as we, if something comes back up, we'll be back to you as soon as it gets far enough along that something can happen, but there is nothing on the table at this point for that.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. Any, Mr. Schla?
Yes, the only thing I would add to that is, in our research, our bond attorney was pretty adamant about the fact that if we were to go out and issue general obligation bond for the purpose of putting infrastructure, whether it was TIF or general fund or whatever the case may be, the ownership of whatever it is we're borrowing to install would have, would have had to have been the town's until that debt has been defaced. We'll certainly, if you've got other issues that, or examples of where that didn't occur, I can certainly take that back to their, to our bond attorney, but that, that's not our insight, that's, that came directly from our bond attorney.
That's fine, I'll just send Nick the emails, but I know the schools don't do that, they pass bonds all the time.
All right, well, at least I've laid it out there for you, so now you can discuss it, investigate it, deal with it appropriately. We don't know where that may go, so everybody can understand that at this point. Any other discussion about item number four?
Well, I do want to ask a question about that. What did, what did the bond attorney base that on? I mean, is it something you all can share with us, is there?
You mean in terms of law citation?
Yes.
I'm not, I have no idea. We just asked them to check into that situation because quite frankly, I mean, I don't know that the town would want to own that infrastructure in the middle of the MUD district to begin with, you know?
Right. And I guess that's kind of what...
And it was just a concern, I don't know what she used as a citation.
Did she, I mean, did she provide like a memo on that or something, or she just kind of verbally said that?
I'll go back and look at some emails because I know that we've had conversations where I've asked that question in writing from her, I mean, generally speaking, her explanation has been that you sell those bonds as bondholders get to rely on the ownership, you as the owner, you as the seller of the bonds, so that was the general basis for it, but I can certainly go back and look because I know I've asked specifically and more detailed questions with regard to that in the past, so I'm happy to go do that.
All right, good.
But Jennifer, the easiest answer is, don't put the pipes in the bond. Let the developer put the pipes in the ground, you don't have that problem at all, it just goes away.
All right, any other questions? All right. Item number five on the council agenda and item two on the MUD agenda, is that right, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Consider and take appropriate action regarding disposition of all shared information technology assets jointly owned by town and Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number 1. There is a spreadsheet that has gone through several iterations. Still don't know if it's totally complete, but, but at least it is a work in progress. Jennifer, or Mike, or Mike, anybody want to start by kind of going over the spreadsheet briefly?
I'll make a comment.
All right, Councilmember Schaffner.
Just, just for those of us who weren't in the subcommittee, because I had this question, these are all agreed to shared items, because I thought the Y meant that we want, we, that's ours and the N was not theirs, I didn't know what the Y and the N meant. So for, for those that are looking at this, these, these are actually agreed to, agreed to shared items, correct? Am I correct on that?
Yes, the whole, the whole sheets are the items that are shared.
Okay.
And the, if you're looking at the town, MUD, or auction, what that is, is that the, the yes means, if it's in, under the town, it means the town wants to keep it.
Right.
If it's under the MUD, it means the MUD wants to keep it, and most importantly, I guess, the auction, the N's mean somebody wants to keep it, it's not going to go to auction, and then there's, there's a Y in the auction, that means that neither entity really wants that item anymore, so we're, we can send that to a salvage auction.
So one decision tonight might be, is everybody agreeable that those things that we're saying are auction, we would find a source to sell them and split the money? Is that the plan? What was, what was the plan?
That's, that would be the plan, I'm sure.
That's what we talked about.
And we would split it 50/50?
Yes, sir.
All right?
It's only 35, 45.
It's only 300 and something dollars.
It's not a lot of money, well, depends on what you pay for it, Jim, you can auction, you can bid on it, you can bid on it, Jim, when it goes for auction.
No, no, I just, I just looked at the sheet and, and on the, the no-no, no-no yes, it's a grand total of 335 dollars, I mean, it's a huge amount of money.
Well, we don't have everything priced on there, we just, just a couple of things were priced, so, because if it was going to auction, we felt like, why price it? We'll get what we get at auction.
All right, so these blank spaces actually have real numbers behind them?
They might.
They will.
If you bid on it, it'll have your number.
Okay, got it.
And I don't expect a lot of money.
I'm sorry, when I saw the blank, I thought it had no value, so I apologize.
So, I don't know, counsel, that you need to take action other than if you have some disagreement about the concept of splitting that which is going to be auction with the MUD 50/50, then say so or make a motion.
Well, can I ask some questions first?
Yes.
This list, is it all under the guise of the ILA dated January 7th, 2013?
No.
This list of equipment has been purchased over time. I couldn't tell you the date that some of this stuff was purchased, I mean, we could tell you, we just didn't go back.
But we entered into an agreement with the MUD, because it relates to all this equipment.
Yeah, I think, I've read this, I think it encompasses the equipment that's on the sheet.
So my, my question is, on page three of the ILA, in the first paragraph, middle sentence, says, "MUD 1 will receive 50% of all licenses, hardware, or software access." Doesn't say ownership, and I looked in this agreement, I don't see anything about ownership. So access to me is not ownership.
Greg, I'm sorry, where were you, I don't see it.
It's not on the page, on those spreadsheet pages, he's looking at...
Your ILA.
...in agreement between the MUD and the town.
Thank you.
And I don't know that you...
The word ownership doesn't appear anywhere in the agreement.
We paid for 50% of it, we billed and paid for it.
I understand what you're saying, but the agreement says access, not ownership. I need a clarification.
Comments? Neil?
I think it was as a recognition that since we're going our own direction in IT, the discussion between the committees, the town committee and our committee was, okay, how are we going to, first of all, we want to see who uses it, and that's what this list is basically for. And then we also want to see who needed it in the future, or even needed it for, until the end of January. Bottom line is, I think, you know, hardware gets obsolete pretty fast, especially when you depreciate it over five years. The software licenses probably are the most needed by either side, and, but, I mean, if you want to look at it that way, if we buy 100 licenses and the town's using, I'm just going to throw out a number, 75, and, and we are only using 25, well, if you, if we want, look at it like we'll have access, okay, we'll keep access to 50 licenses. That's not what the intent was, it wasn't where we were going that way, we were saying, okay, what's the fair way to move forward? And I think this is what this really entails, is what's fair going forward based on the budget decisions that have been made.
And I, I think the agreement, if it, did you say that's the one for contractual services? Contractual personnel services?
No, it's information technology services.
What's the front of contractual?
It's under contractual services.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, so...
Contractual personnel services.
So for the amount that we paid each year for IT services, it gained us 50% the access, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so why did we pay for software licenses and, you know, renewals and when there had to be upgrades? Why would we bill those amounts if it was covered under the contractual services for the amount that was agreed to just for the service?
Personally, I wasn't here when those negotiations were made, but it's, it's our personnel, so we're paying 100% of their salaries, so I'm sure you're paying 50% based upon salary, machinery, software, so you're gaining access to that.
No, no, that was just for personnel.
If you can show me the word ownership, I'm fine with it, but I don't see here where it says ownership, is there another contract that says you own half of it?
And I don't know if it's in a CMO contract or that contract somewhere else, it says any hardware or software used by the town 100% or the MUD 100%, we will pay full cost of it. Is that correct, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
But that, this contract overrode the CMO contract, correct?
That was my understanding.
Right, so again, what I'm trying to understand is, if that's, if, if, since that contract was in place since 2013, so that would be 2013 and 2014, and now 2015, why would the district pay 50% of all the license renewals and all of the upgraded software and, and things that were done if, if what you're saying is that it was only for access, I mean, that the, that the amount that we paid in that contract gave us access to those things, we should have only paid the cost of the personnel services, right? And not the other additional costs that we paid as far as buying new software, renewing licenses, we should have only paid for the, the IT service amount that was determined each year?
I, that's not the issue here, the issue here, we have a signed contract, and it says access, it doesn't say ownership. Just show me something where you own 50% of the equipment.
What Jennifer's saying is, if you interpret it as access, then why were we being billed for hardware and software billed in that?
That's, that's not my issue, and I'm not interpreting anything, I'm reading what it says on the contract.
So let me interrupt here.
I think that, I think to his point, that's what we're saying, is what on this list was purchased after this contract was signed?
2013, and then what, what did...
In other words, what I'm saying is, we don't know on this list what was purchased after the contract was signed.
Well, Mike could probably tell you real...
You know, because...
Mike, right off the top of your head.
Because I think what, what, to Greg's point, is that stuff was already purchased, hardware, software, that was purchased jointly, you, we have access to it.
Well, the big ticket item, I think it's Equilogic PS6500, is that right, Mike? That was purchased in 2011? That's what the invoice, I think, yeah.
If that's what was on, then, yes.
Right, so, but if you want to go down that road, then what was purchased 2013 forward, then we, we shouldn't have been paying 50% of.
Right.
Well, there's a reference to joint purchases in this contract, but there's no definition of what a joint purchase is, so I...
So let me see if I can move us forward a little bit. The committee did not discuss that concept at all, so it's somewhat maybe foreign to all of us. I think the fact that it has been a long time practice of the two boards, the council and the MUD boards, that we shared in the cost of new equipment, unless that new equipment was specifically for one party, right?
Correct.
It seems like to me that, that our practice has been that. Whatever was formalized in writing maybe isn't sufficient. We've always had those issues, maybe the definitions aren't right. So from my perspective, I think the fair thing to deal with this is, if our practice was that, let's get it close to that as we can. I don't want to spend six months trying to deal with this issue, it's not worth it to me, and, and come up with what are you willing to do financially, either side? That's just me personally, so to, to help us move forward, let me hear from my council members, how do you want to move forward with this in this joint meeting, and then, Jim, I'll give you a chance to see what, what you all want to do based on what you hear, is that fair enough with everybody?
Yes, sir.
Nick, you might want to ask one question before that, and that is, what kind of money are we talking about? Is this $20,000 or $120,000, because it might make a difference. I mean, if it's pocket change, who cares?
And the issue to me is that it's not going somewhere else, it's staying within the town residence. I realize Solana has a couple of individual meters, but for the most part, it's going from the left pocket to the right pocket of town residence.
So I think if you look at page two of your handout, and those people who've worked on the spreadsheet can hold it here.
Let me just give you a quick...
There are some figures there, so...
Right.
So, Mike?
The, the green columns, the four or five green columns and the, and subsequent blue columns are relatively the same information. We had the town staff go in in the green columns and look at each individual piece of equipment on third-party vendors, go to eBay, go to IT Surplus, see what kind of value we could get for these particular pieces of equipment, and we averaged them, you know, the two, the two information pieces that we got, we averaged them, and, and in some cases, what you see in that projected value is our IT director, Mike Pastor, said, you know, that just doesn't make sense. So you might look down there and see that the average might be $65, but he puts in an assigned value of 125 as an example. That is because, you know, in his given field, his expertise, he feels like he's, can, he can go out and get $125 for it. So there was some, some, you know, macination of those numbers. Then I asked Jennifer, I said, you know, it's only fair that you guys go through that same exercise and let's compare the numbers, and that's what Jennifer did. So you'll see that she went out on eBay and she went out on other site, and she averaged them and came up with a projected value, and as you roll down to the second page, you can see that in the town's instance, we came up with a total town buyout of $17,754 is what we're talking about. For that same piece of equipment, for that same, for all that same equipment, that the MUD's determination was $20,862. So we came pretty close to about a $3,000 difference.
And as Kevin...
To what the value is.
As Kevin was pointing out, item number 60 on your sheet, the far left column, they're just sequential numbers, item 60 is one of the most valuable pieces, and you can see that our price range from 9,000 to 11,500, I guess, if that, I'm looking at that right, and Jennifer's investigation was 14 to 12, round numbers.
10 to 12.
Yeah, if you go to that, I don't know what that one column is that...
Or if you go on left to right, yeah.
Yeah, it's, was that eBay, I guess, maybe, that's the eBay column, yeah, so that's, yeah, 10 grand.
Can I just ask?
So with the, the point here, when you were asking, Jim, it looks like that there's $254 and $343, that the MUD wants to buy the remaining value, so to speak, of that equipment and take ownership, is that right, Jennifer?
Mm-hmm.
And those items are represented with a Y in the MUD, and the town wants to keep the others, and so there's, is that 37,000, 38,000, is that right? For that, if you add those two together, or are we not supposed to add them together, I guess?
No, I think there's, it's our price and their price.
We came up with 17, you came up with 20, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, one other thing I want to point out real quick, too, on the first page, if you look under the town and MUD, there's a blue box because in, on the, the case of those two items, both the town and the MUD wanted those, so the, it shows that in blue because that was, this final spreadsheet was where I added mine in and I put that in there, so that, that makes up a bit of the difference of why the MUD amount to pay the town is a little more than what the town came up because I'm indicating that we would buy those items.
You're talking about item 42, 43?
Items four and five.
Just, just $65.
The last one, what are you talking about?
Yeah, it's not very much money, but that's how the, those buyout amounts different.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, for the benefit of the non-committee members that weren't at that meeting, I think it was unanimous that we all agreed that if there was equipment at the fire station, because they remain split entities, if you will, we're going to keep them that way, and if they need IT support moving forward or new IT equipment, we'll continue to do it just like we've always done it, 50/50, and move forward. So we are not including splitting any of the fire department components that are dedicated to the fire and EMS.
I think the same was with the AV equipment, too, wasn't it?
And the, and the AV equipment in this building, that's exactly right.
And I, on the final... Director Moss, President Moss.
I have to admit that a whole lot of this doesn't mean a thing to me. I don't understand the equipment, where it came from or anything, I have just one question, is it possible at this point in time for the town to say, here's a number, or for the MUD to say, here's a number, and, and not carry this on for months and months and months of arguing about what's going to end up being, I think, a few thousand dollars? Will it, is the town ready to say, okay, reel the MUD $500?
I have one question. Before we ask, Councilmember Lamott's been wanting to say something, then I'll come to you.
Mike, Jennifer, your eBay that you got, is that items listed or actually sold for, for these dollar amounts? Because people put a lot of stuff on eBay trying to get money.
Sure, right. And some, I tried to find things, I tried to find things that were sold, but in some cases, it was like buy-it-now prices, it was just the best I could find with those things.
I, I, I'm sorry, I would not go with these numbers then, I wouldn't go with them.
All right, so President Moss...
Well, Greg, ask the same, ask, well, ask the same question to Mike Pastor, how did the town...
He answered that.
I did, same, same.
Yeah, same thing, okay.
Same thing.
I'm not even going to look at it.
So President Moss, you made a suggestion, I'll yield the chair to you to see if your board wants to do anything in the way of a specific motion, and if you don't, then I'll go to the council.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had a question.
Just one clarifying question, have, have, has the MUD paid the town anything on the 20,000 yet for the services? Have y'all paid anything?
I'm sorry...
We're talking about the, the CMO contract that agreed to 20,000 for the first four months.
Has, has any money exchanged?
I don't know, have we been billed for it? I don't... I, I don't know.
I don't think there's.
I don't recall seeing that check, but it could, but usually when I get a payment to the town, it's a, you know, a stack of invoices.
Well, and I say that, just keep that in mind, that, that they agreed to pay us twenty thousand, so.
For a period of time.
Right.
Through, yeah, through January thirty-first.
We negotiate that in this as well, you know.
Did everybody understand what he was talking about?
Yes.
And Phil, the, uh, through our October financials, I didn't see it yet.
Okay. Well, it, it wouldn't be till this coming month.
When we review it in October.
Would, would it be listed separately, or would it just be showed to the town?
I don't think we've invoiced it yet.
Well, it, your, your letter said that, that you would pay five thousand per month for October through January. I don't know if we have to bill you, or if you're just paying that, I'm, I'm not sure on that.
We require a bill on everything.
Oh, yeah. It doesn't specify, as Greg would say.
Yeah, I guess we don't pay anything then.
President Moss, I will lead, yield the chair to you.
Right, okay, and, and unless somebody has a number on both sides tonight, my further suggestion would be, we have a committee, uh, of, uh, four people who can make decisions a lot better than fifteen or twenty of us. Would it be possible, would the town consider reconvening that committee? And having that committee come up with a number, whatever it is, that's acceptable to everybody? That, that's my other suggestion, so does anybody on the mud board have a number that they want to mention tonight?
Well, yeah. But only because I'm sitting here with a, with a calculator. Look, I, I, Tim, I'm kind of like you, I, we're talking about peanuts here, I'd kind of like to get it out of the way, be done with it. Seventeen, seven fifty-four, excuse me, twenty-eight, sixty-two minus seventeen, seven fifty-four divided by two, added to seventeen, seventy, fifty-four comes to nineteen, three oh eight, split the difference.
How'd you get twenty-eight and seventeen?
I just took the two numbers here and subtracted them.
He averaged the two numbers.
Uh, basically, yeah, you could add them together, divide them by two.
But you didn't do anything with the two fifty-four or three forty-three, right?
No, because it's such a small number, I didn't even mess with it.
So what's it come up to?
But you could do that, too, Nick, you could add the four numbers, you could add, you could add all four numbers up and divide it by two, you get the same thing.
Jim, are you recommending that number?
Yeah, I, I just, well, take the four columns, add them up and divide it by two, that includes everything.
That's just the shared hardware, Tab.
Okay.
Well, but it's at least an item.
But it's an item, it's an item.
I have a question on.
So what was your number, Jim, just so I can write?
Well, I think Nick's got a good point, add the four numbers up and divide it by two.
Oh, the four numbers.
Yeah, take the four numbers, add them up, divide it by two, and just split in the difference. That gets the hardware out of the way.
On, on some of these lines, though, on their average value, on their eBay, on their, uh, projected, there's no cost on them, like.
There's no value there.
Right, if you look at three, four.
Yeah, it's probably not worth anything.
Was there a reason those were left off? I guess it's four, five, six, seven, eight. You have a sixty-five dollar projected town value, but there's no value in the average value column. Talking two hundred and sixty dollars.
So were you able to find?
Sorry, I was talking to Tammy, on which particular items?
On the green section, okay? If you look at the average value, third column over, and look at lines, uh, it looks like four, five, six, seven. There's no price, the only column that has a price is the projected town price.
On four, five, six, and seven, on the second page, on the bottom, I just put flat panels are valued at sixty-five, just as an average number, if you look at buying used monitors, it's somewhere around sixty-five dollars.
Okay, so that, that would be added into, the only column that has consistent numbers all the way through is that averaged value. The rest of them have like no, no column and no price at all in there.
Or projected town value does.
Yeah, but the, the, the numbers that Jim used just now to, to get to the seventeen, seven, fifty-four came from the projected town value column of thirty-five, five oh seven, sum divided by two there. And that's the highest number on there on the board, so.
And if you take all four numbers and add, and add them divided by two, it's nineteen, six oh six, fifty cents.
Uh, Director Thomas, would you care to make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion that we split the difference on the hardware and agree that nineteen, six oh six, fifty is a fair amount.
And how'd you come up with that, added all the columns?
Took the four numbers and divided by two.
What four?
The town's two numbers and our two numbers, add them together, divide it by two, split the difference.
So the seventeen, seven fifty-four, the two fifty-four, the twenty thousand.
Seventeen, seven fifty-four plus two fifty-four plus twenty-eight, sixty-two plus three forty-three divided by two. Comes out to nineteen, six oh six, fifty, if I keyed it in right.
That's fine.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
And that's on the shared hardware.
Shared hardware.
All those in favor? It is unanimous.
All right, council, uh, you've heard the mud's action. I would entertain a motion from council if you wish to do so.
Do we have to make a motion, Nick, to discuss?
No, you can discuss if you want to, if you don't want to make a motion.
So I just, I just want to understand better. Uh, so the number that Jim's coming up with, that would, that would put this issue to bed? The, the, the two entities would have separated the entire IT package, and y'all would go and do y'all's thing, and we would do ours?
Hardware, Ryland, separate the hardware, this is just a hardware discussion.
Okay, so this doesn't include software?
No, we'll talk about that next.
Okay. My, my recommendation, I think there's tremendous value in the separation, I think it will, it'll make us all better bedfellows. I, I think that doing this is a good idea, but I'd really like to know what the total number is, before I hear any sort of motions, personally. Um, I'd also like to hear, um, uh, Ryland's thoughts on it before, uh, I, uh, entertain any motions as well, but I'd like to hear a total number, and then I'd like to hear a little bit of Ryland's expertise on the thoughts, because I get a little confused.
Yeah, um, I'll keep my discussion to hardware, since that's what we're focusing on now. The, talking about the potential values of hardware versus software is a completely different conversation, so we'll keep them separate. Relative to hardware, the way I have looked at it from the beginning here is that we have some hardware that has some value per our depreciation schedule of five years and some that does not. For the hardware that still has value per the depreciation schedule, from the get-go, I've thought it was appropriate for us to go ahead and, and buy out the mud's share. Uh, all of those things are clearly of use and will continue to have useful life. I don't have any, um, questions there. The only question I had about the, about the depreciated hardware was, since it is fully depreciated and we're having to go through these exercises to determine what the value is, looking at eBay, we understand that's a difficult thing to do, to ascertain true market value, right? For the reasons that Councilman Lamott noted. My thought was, have we looked at, for everything that is off the books, right? That was paid for half and half and is off the books? Have we looked at literally splitting the baby? We have eleven network switches, here's five. If that's even technically possible, that's a Mike question, I don't know if Mike's looked at that. And if that's not possible, if the output of that is the yeses and nos here, where we've already indicated what can go to the mud, then I think Mr. Thomas's idea is pretty valid.
So you think the value is fair?
It's not enough money to really move the needle beyond what's all, the pri, the, the, the vast majority of that nineteen thousand dollars is made up of stuff that still has value on the books, so, uh, to me, it's, it's fair.
So let me comment on that just briefly. It could have been that some of the items could have been, you say, here, mud, this is yours, here, town, this is yours. But in their movement in the last thirty or sixty days, or whatever that's been, they have gone ahead and purchased some things they need, right? To, to begin the process. So they might could have used a particular switch, and what we did at one of our meetings is we tried to delineate whether things you would like to have that we don't need. That's where those yeses are in the mud column, am I saying that right?
Network bridges.
And, and, and that was all that really was kind of split. There might have been some things that you could have said, well, let's go up here to a network QUAP and say there are five or six of them, here, three here, three of them are mud, and town, here's three. And you would have had a different financial figure here, and, and in some cases, the town would have had to go buy new equipment. If, so, so what we tried to do in the yes-no column a little bit was to say, to keep the town infrastructure working the way it would work, realizing that there's some value because of depreciation there, but, but if it's down to zero, my thought is, it was the mud's choice to leave and go. And I don't want to debate the things that are down to zero. You paid for them, we paid for them, we both got use out of them for X period of time. Let's just go on. And that's kind of what I think we've tried to do here as best we could, it's not easy. Uh, I'm with, with Ryland. Somewhere around that nineteen thousand dollar figure is probably a fair price. And, uh, so, so from my perspective, I would prefer that, uh, mu, town, you decide, are you willing to pay X amount to solve the hardware issue? And if you don't want to do that right now, and you want to go to software, then we can do that. But it would be one thing off the list, is kind of my take. So I'll just kind of go back to council again, any other questions or anybody want to make a motion? I understand the difficulty.
I got two quick questions.
Yes.
One is, wha, what did it cost y'all hardware-wise to start up again? The mayor said y'all had bought some things, do you have any idea? Was it? Just a not specific number, was it five thousand dollars, was it ten thousand?
No, it was, uh, about a hundred and fourteen thousand.
To buy new hardware equipment, okay. And, oh, the other thing was, I'd like to see them both, I, I think I'm going to have a hard time making a decision on one if I don't. I don't know what, I don't know what, is the software a comparable number, or is, are you going to come back and give me some?
The number on the table now is twenty-four thousand.
For the software?
Right, and there's things in there to discuss.
Okay, so would you guys go half on the software, split that number in half, and then do the hardware at the number it is now?
The buyout of the town, just the software is twenty-four, I think.
Yeah, twenty-four, seven, sixty-four is the buyout number.
That's the, that's the proposed buyout number.
Yeah, the total number is forty-eight something, forty-nine something.
Okay.
But the buyout number is twenty-four, seven, sixty-four, seventy-two, seventy-two cents. Twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, it's on page three of the handout.
There's a, there's a third, uh, issue, too, which, uh, Councilman Schopfer mentioned, is the, uh, service contract, obviously. The clean thing to do would just go, okay, take that against credit and pay this, so twenty thousand dollars. I think it's five months, uh, four months at five thousand, take the twenty off the top of what we agreed to, software and hardware.
Would y'all be amenable to that?
Yeah. I, I would, uh, there's four other people.
Philip, was that what you were suggesting earlier?
I just, just keep it in mind that we have that.
So you put the two numbers together and subtract.
Counsel, I'll take you to the software page, since, uh, we have someone who wants to do that. The twenty-four thousand, seven sixty-four that's in the right-hand column of page three, I don't agree with. We bought jointly software for the period of time that we used it, we both used it. It's not something that you can split necessarily. You could say that, um, open file agent of Bright Store, item number two, for a period of time, that agent was installed on client PCs, everybody got the use of it. The mud has decided to move, and they're going to need something else for however they're going to deal with that, and that's part of what Jennifer's saying they're buying. SQL Server is an example, um, wherever that was, it's item number seven. For a long number of years, uh, we've both got our value of that. And SQL Server two thousand and o, eight is pretty darn old. And although it still functions, and you tend not to necessarily depreciate software, just like you do hardware, I'm not willing to pay the mud anything for that software. Uh, they used it for the period of time they used it, they chose to leave, that's their choice. Uh, they can't take it with them. In the case of, uh, Office twenty-ten Pro, we had this discussion about, well, we bought a hundred licenses, I believe was the case. We split it fifty-fifty in the cost, but the reality was, uh, the mud didn't need fifty, is what we came up with. But our methodology for buying was split it fifty-fifty, and we didn't worry about necessarily the details. Well, my understanding is the mud is getting a new version of Office, uh, other than twenty-ten, and that's part of your cost, it would be my assumption. And, um, at some point, the town may get a new version of Office. So I, I don't agree with buying the software. I might have some consideration for the virtual aspects of it, but for the rest of it, I wouldn't agree to pay for it, that's just me. So anybody else want to comment?
I'd like to, I haven't booked any software in quite a number of years, but is it booked as an asset or is it expense? Does it have a depreciable life?
I've, person, in my line of work, I've always looked at it as expense.
Okay.
But I'm just one guy.
And are we, are we saying that, so I, I'm assuming that we're, we're saying that that's three hundred and thirty-five dollars, we would pay original cost?
Which item are you looking for?
For like Office two thousand and ten. So is that what?
What number?
That's number eight, nine.
Nine.
That's the unit, that's per license, three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five, unit cost.
That was the rack rate at the time we bought it.
How did you come up to eight, seven, ten?
That is.
That's the excess of, uh, twenty-six, uh, licenses. Times three thirty-five.
Time the original price.
Why, why would we pay my original price?
Because we were supposed to have fifty percent of them when we purchased them. And the town used, has been using twenty-six of our fifty percent.
Did you, did you ask for those twenty-five at any time?
We, we contracted with the town to do our IT, and unfortunately, they used the twenty-six, or fortunately. And that goes on, if you want to go down that road, as far as we purchased EMS equipment that the town didn't want to buy for, I think it was twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, is correct, Mayor? I think you made the motion to, uh, purchase it.
I wouldn't agree that the town didn't want to buy, but yes, we did purchase it.
I do want to say, excuse me, but when we bought the new laptops for the directors last year, yes, we were required to buy new Microsoft for them, even though we had licenses available, because those licenses were already placed on town equipment. So we did have to buy, I think, seven new Microsofts, instead of getting those over from the twenty-six that belonged to us.
Look, here, here's another way of looking at that, is out of the total licenses bought, the town used twenty-six licenses that the mud paid for. We paid for it, so if you take two twenty-six, excuse me, twenty-six times three thirty-five, that is the eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Those are licenses that we paid for, but you guys used them. And so we're just saying, you'll give us some money back.
Well, here's, here's the problem that I have with that, is that if you go back to the contract, you, uh, it's specifically, and I asked for this today, and, and I, I didn't get it, uh, or it doesn't exist, I guess. But it says that, uh, if currently there is limited access to software or hardware due to licensing, then by February first, two thousand and thirteen, joint access shall be provided to authorized users as designated by the town manager for town personnel and the mud manager for mud personnel. Mud will receive fifty percent of any licenses, hardware, or software access. And so undoubtedly, you didn't need them, you only needed the twenty-six, the twenty-four.
But Philip, we paid for fifty percent.
But you, you agreed to pay that, that was an agreement that you went into.
I understand, and hopefully tonight, we'll, we'll agree to what's fair to settle this thing up.
What I'm saying is that at any time you had access to that, but you didn't ask for it.
But, no, we did, when we upgraded the, the, when we got new laptops for the board members, but the IT keeps the equipment, because we pay them, we pay them for a service. And they bought the new, um, Microsoft Office for all of those as if there was no additional, I didn't know if there was additional or not. They, they kept the, they keep the inventory, is what I'm getting at.
I guess that's why I, that's why I asked for the list for the February first, two thousand and thirteen, that the town manager would give a list, the mud manager would give a list, but I guess that never happened.
Far as I know, it didn't.
Can I ask a question?
Well, Phil, I'm sorry, go ahead now.
I got a couple of hands, and then I'll get to you, so, so.
Neil was first, go ahead. Oh, go ahead, Garrett. So let me ask, let me ask Nick and Ryland a hypothetical question, this will help me understand this. I get the software piece. If me and a buddy of mine had a business, and we decided that my buddy was going to go do something different, and I was going to go do something different, and we said, well, here's some computers, you take this, take that. And we got down to the software, and we'd been in business as long as the town and the mud have been together in business with this software. My question to you guys is, I get you can go sell a computer, is there any real value? If we were going to sell this, could we go sell any of this software? If we were gonna sell this, could we go sell any of this software right now to anybody? Would anybody buy two thousand and ten software? Would it?
That's, that's not true. You can go online and see, you know, QuickBooks, twenty-ten, twenty-twelve software for sale. As long as you have the license.
Well, I disagree.
I'm just telling you, it's online.
And I understand you can go buy QuickBooks. But, but QuickBooks is different than Office. Office gets obsoleted pretty fast if you want to stay current in using that technology.
And what are y'all going to, are you going back to two thousand and ten?
Two thousand and thirteen.
See, there's, that answers that question.
There's my question. I get, I get the hardware and I understand that, but I'm, I'm really just asking it, almost an accounting question. Was this an expense? Was this expensed or is this depreciated? Is there still some real value of this? Because at the end of the day, if we paid everybody a hundred bucks an hour, by the time the fifteen of us get through debating this, it would have been cheaper just to say, software is worthless, there's twenty thousand dollars or nineteen thousand dollars worth of hardware. Let's write you guys a check and we can all get on to the next issue of the town.
All right, so, so I had Greg wanting the floor and I have Jim Hayes and then I have Neil Timmy. So, let's go down that list and see how we go.
Let's see if I can make a motion to end this and with a compromise. I'd like to make a motion to pay ten thousand dollars to the mud for the buyout of the hardware and software listed.
All right, council, we have a motion by Councilmember Lamont to pay the mud ten thousand dollars to buy out the hardware and the software. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Councilmember Reed has seconded. Any discussion?
I, I don't think you can offer ten thousand for hardware when Ryland just said that it's worth nineteen.
No, we were gonna split the cost, I think that was the.
No, I, I.
That is the split cost.
So, can, can, can I make an amendment to what I just seconded and make that number? Jim, what did you say the number was?
Drop the cents, nineteen six oh six.
Nineteen six oh six.
All right, I have a motion to amend the main motion from Councilmember Reed to make the amount nineteen six oh six. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I do have a second from Councilmember Perro. All right, so the amendment is on the floor and as I understand, it did not change the part of the motion that said hardware and software.
No.
That's a total figure that you're offering.
Correct.
All right, so any discussion about the amendment?
I just wanna, I want to know and, and be very clear from Nick and Ryland. So, you say there's no value in the software.
Well, there's, there's a, there's one distinction. And the discussion we've had up to this point about software applies to perpetual licenses, which means you buy it once, it's yours forever. So, obviously, you've paid for it. The, the value in hand at some point becomes exhausted because you can't get any more out of what you've just bought. It's yours, you can use it, or you can watch it collect dust, you paid a thousand dollars for it, there it is. There are some items on here that are renewable software licenses, which is like a yearly license structure. I think it is appropriate for the town to pay the mud their fifty percent for that based on the fact that it's an ongoing cost to us and will continue to be.
You totaled that up.
I'm working on it right now, actually.
Actually, that committee, when the committee met, Mr. Mayor, when the committee met, I think we agreed to waive mud costs from October one forward. And now, what, what it was?
We did, yeah.
I have a question regarding the software that we originally purchased for twenty thousand something. Is that in this software price?
For twenty thousand, what specifically?
What was EMS, maybe Chief Thomas?
No, it's not in this.
Okay, so.
Because that was fire EMS related, we pulled all that out.
Okay, Philip, to answer your question, the, the values listed here for the software that's renewable licensing is eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Garrett, Garrett, what Kevin was talking about a minute ago was, a year ago, a year and a half ago, Danny needed a severe upgrade to the software on both his fire trucks as well as his ambulances. And so, the mud just went and bought it, it's twenty, twenty thousand dollars roughly. And we did not task the town to pay for any of it, we just paid for the whole thing.
Just a point, I mean, they do have Microsoft Office two thousand and ten Pro, hundred and fourteen, one thirty-nine, two twenty-four, one ninety-nine, one thirty-nine, four to five different locations.
These are volume licensed copies through Microsoft, we can't resell them. Yeah, that, yeah, I wanted to make that point, those aren't transferable.
But if we had them new purchased, that's what I'm saying, obviously, it's a third of the price.
All right, so I'm gonna go back to council because I have a motion on the floor. I have a motion to amend, Councilmember Reed, to offer to buy the hardware and the software for some figure.
Nineteen six oh six.
Nineteen six oh six, which I didn't write down, so I don't know what it was.
Nick, before you ask for a vote, can I say something?
Let me, can?
Yeah, let me kind of get this a little further and I'll come back to you for sure.
I, I'd like to, can I amend my amendment?
Poor town.
I think Dr. Seuss wrote a book that was called that, but I'd like to include that amount that Ryland was talking about in there. I think that's fair.
You would like to add eleven two fifty-one to the nineteen six oh six, is that what you're saying?
Is that, you're saying you think it's the value? Which takes you to thirty-eight fifty-seven, thirty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven.
Oh, three oh eight fifty-seven?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. Councilmember Perro, did you second Councilmember Reed's amendment?
He revised amendment to add the software cost.
No, just his original amendment, you the second, right?
Yes, and I will revise my second to include the software cost.
All right, so we will show that the second and the mover have agreed that the motion would be to pay thirty thousand, eight fifty-seven to the mud for the buyout of hardware and software. Discussion on the amendment.
Only one caveat that you may want to consider is if you take the twenty off, then it would be ten, eight fifty-seven. And we can just do away with it.
Take the what?
The twenty.
Well, let's talk about the twenty then, okay? It's not a full twenty.
Wait, I'm gonna stop you just a minute. I'm gonna try to deal with this issue, I'll come and ask, see if y'all want to do anything, okay? All right, so council, any other questions about this? You've heard a remark. I'll, I'll comment on the remark. I think you leave the hardware separate and you leave the payments for services separate. I think there are different issues. I think it would clearly show you solved the hardware and software issue with the transference of, of some money and you dealt with it and the mud will pay their twenty thousand when we bill them their twenty thousand. So, that's just kind of me, but, okay. All right, so I had Board Member Thomas wanting to speak, so Jim.
You, you covered exactly what I was gonna say when he did the software piece, I'm fine.
All right. Mr. Carr, did you want to offer something?
Not on those two pieces, if we're gonna do service separate.
Can I ask a question?
You're welcome to make it about anything, I'm just.
I didn't write down, can you tell me the exact software amount again? I'm sorry, it was eleven and I missed the rest. Two, five, one?
Eleven, two, five, one is what was added at the dius, which.
It's a total of thirty-eight fifty-seven.
Three oh eight fifty-seven.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, yes, Neil?
Just for clarification, Ryland, which, you're only talking about the ones with the renewable dates?
Correct, yeah, so that would be.
The six twenty-five, the fifteen ninety-two.
Yep.
Looks like twenty-one, twenty-four and the sixty-nine ten.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm gonna ask my council to vote in just a moment. So, I personally am gonna vote no to the amendment. Not that I disagree with the principle, but I disagree with the amount. I don't think that those renewable pieces are something that I would pay for. The mud received their value of that for the length of time that they used it. They have made the choice to leave and why should I pay them for that is kind of my opinion. So, I'm not, I'm not gonna vote for the thirty thousand, eight fifty-seven because of that factor. Anybody else want to comment?
I'm also not gonna vote for it. I still go back to my original comment, mud one will receive fifty percent of any licenses, hardware or software access. And I just don't think we should be paying money. I, we offered a compromise, but I'm, I just think the amount is way too high.
Councilmember Reed.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a recommendation that, because I'm really deferring to you and Ryland's expertise. If you feel like there's a different amount, I'm just trying to reach a number that we can take back to them. If you feel like there's a more acceptable number, would you, I'll make an amendment to my four other amendments and put that before us. I, I just am interested in putting it to bed and, and I'm not opposed to proposing a different number. I don't claim to be an expert on this, I'm just trying to move this issue along.
I think you have a split, kind of a split decision with Nick not wanting to do anything and Ryland wanting to give.
Maybe that is the problem.
Well, and, and I'll explain my position relative to the mayor's is, and I agree with what he says in principle. There's certainly logical reason to approach it in that fashion, to say that you, you have used it and you've gotten your use. I look at it as that because it's renewable, it's something that we've established a requirement for. We know we're gonna need it to continue to operate systems that have already been deployed. And it's a cost that is going to come to us. And bottom line on the reason we're all here is we lost a customer. And sometimes having certain customers helps defray your costs. And when you lose that customer sometimes, you take it on the chin. And rather than split hairs further in this setting, knowing that it is renewable and knowing that it's gonna continue to hit us each year, I, I don't have a problem with moving forward with it. But I'm not gonna, I'm not religious about it, I just, that's just where I stand right now.
So, let me ask a question of Mike, and I don't know that you can answer this, Mike. But the big items that I am looking at are the virtual servers and backup. That say a renewal date of November twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, those are annual licenses.
Correct.
Okay, so does that mean that November two thousand and fourteen, which is now, we paid for those two things?
The purchase price you see there is actual purchase price, the renewal price is less than the purchase price.
Okay, so see the problem that I have is you're, you're splitting something that was an original purchase price, but it was bought some time ago, there's been some use.
Yep.
And so, I don't want to pay what I think is an unfair amount because it's a split of original purchase. And that's kind of the, the problem I have. I don't have a problem with paying for something that I think is fair and equitable, but that's where I end up with this, this problem.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Nick, I was looking at this as recurring cost only.
Okay, so Councilmember Lot, Lamont, I can't even talk, and then Councilmember Kurtz.
You mentioned the word customer, I look at them more as a partner. They're not really a customer, we went into an agreement with them.
That's true, but they were there voluntarily and they left voluntarily because we didn't do what we needed to do to keep them. That's the point I wanted to, just the point I wanted to make.
Councilmember Kurtz.
He speaks. I'm new to this, so please bear with me. Is there a way for us to, we kind of seem to be settled on the hardware. So, to move that along and table the software and come up with the real cost that we're talking about? Because kind of all over the board here on the cost on the software, so why don't we just put the hardware to bed? Ta, can we table the software, get the real numbers that we think are fair, that, the renewable costs? And, and come back at that, so we're not, because it just seems like we just keep going around and around on it. So, just my opinion.
You could move a substitute motion. I'll just help you out here, you could move a substitute motion to pay a dollar amount for the hardware and leave it at that, and if you get a second and it wins, it would kill the issue. And then we can, we'll be on to the software and we'll deal with that separately. That would be a way to handle that.
Because we, we were gonna do that originally, we just wanted to hear about the software, so I'd like to come back and.
And I found, Tim, that you can say, yeah, whatever you just said, the motion, and it did, it worked somehow.
I'd like to put a dollar amount, whatever he said.
All right, just one second. I have a motion, I'll get to you. I have a motion.
Substitute motion.
To substitute to pay nineteen six oh six for the hardware. Do you have a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, Councilmember Reed has seconded, so it's now properly before us. And do any council members have comments or questions about the substitute motion?
I just think it's too much money.
All right, and so I do have Michael that wants to make a comment or want to ask a question, so Michael?
So, to Garrett's point earlier, if you had a, a company where you had two owners and one owner was splitting and, and leaving, some of the renewable items would have value, even though you can't necessarily split them, like an open license with Microsoft or an open license with VMware. You can take that license back to VMware and say, I paid two dollars for this originally, I want a second new license on the renewable date. And instead of you having to pay two dollars to buy it on your own, you can pay the one dollar. So, it's, it can save either side significantly if they're the owner of that property when they go to renew it. Just because of the sheer fact that they have a bigger volume of licenses that they're going with. It's a significant savings when you go back to.
And so, that, I feel like, Michael, that reinforces what we were saying about renewable, the renewable software carrying, carrying value that was worth talking about, so appreciate that.
All right, so I'm gonna go back to my motion, I appreciate that. We have a motion and a second to pay nineteen six oh six for the hardware, separate item all by itself. All right, any other discussion, council?
Just one reminder, they're using eBay and I just don't know the justification and if those are accurate numbers. Is there any type of computer services that come in and give you value that they would buy it on the spot that we could?
I don't know that answer.
I will say, Greg, when I was looking at values, I did find companies online that you can submit to them a list of items and they'll give you an estimate to buy it. You know, outright buy the, the, whatever it is from you.
Because there's a lot of stuff I have that I would love to sell on eBay, the prices that they have, but, you know, no one's gonna buy it.
The thing about it is though, that the town came up with numbers and the mud came up with numbers.
But through the same venue.
But that, but we came up with those numbers.
One thing I did, Greg, I don't really, I don't know what Mike did, but on most all of, well, all of the hardware items, I tried to find at least four places, either four Ebays or two Ebays and two something else. And I, you know, I, I averaged those prices and then where I showed the link on here of where I went to, I went to whatever one of those had the closest price to that average of all the four sites that I found. So, I just was giving an example of this is what it looks like on eBay.
All right. Councilmember.
I just want to add to Greg, I, I'm unsettled by the eBay methodology as well, even though I think Jennifer explained herself well here. And it's, obviously, she was trying to come up with a good number and I'm sure Mike did as well. My reasoning for supporting the nineteen six oh six number is that the vast majority of that number is made up of six or seven pieces of hardware that do have real value still today that weren't fully depreciated. And I think that we would just be going a little too minute, I think it's probably close enough.
Now, we'll continue to use them, is it that? It's like, for instance, servers, we only need half the servers, what are we gonna do with the other half?
They're actually deployed in a full-on deployment as is.
Rollover environment.
So, you can't.
Not easily, can you split it?
No, it's, yeah.
But now, is that our problem or their problem because they're leaving?
What we could do with someone suggested earlier is just have a person come in and say, okay, this is what we buy for and if you want to keep it, pay us half the price.
I don't know what that means.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. I'm gonna deal with this motion and we'll go from there. Council, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of offering to the mud that we pay them nineteen thousand, six hundred and six dollars for hardware that's listed on these sheets that we've decided we want, show your hands. All right, all opposed, same sign. All right, Greg Lamont is opposed, the motion does carry. So, what I'm gonna do, President Moss, is I'm gonna throw it back to you and see if y'all want to deal with that specific issue and either modify it, reject it, accept it and it's all yours.
Director Thomas, do you have a motion?
I absolutely do, we've already, we've already made a motion to do that, so that's great, we're in agreement. And I want to make a motion, now listen, guys, please understand something. I'm, I'm fixing to get killed because I'm on a group that went after fifty-five dollars and owed back taxes and got it. And so, but I'd kind of like to get this thing resolved. And Greg, I mean, Greg, you made a great statement, this money's in this community, it's, it's one pocket versus the other. You can establish some kind of value for licenses and some kind of, I mean, we could sit and talk about this till we go blue. You can establish some kind of value for licenses and some kind of, I mean, we could sit and talk about this till we go blue. Actually, Nick, what I was gonna say earlier was, there is a real number. I mean, the, the eighty-seven ten is actually money that we paid for licenses that we never got to use for. And I would, I would like to make a motion that we throw this twenty-four thousand seven sixty-four out the door and that we agree that the software price paid to us would be eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and we don't worry about the twenty thousand dollars down at the fire station and that's jointly used by everybody. So I'm making a motion that we establish a price tag associated with the software of eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, which is the licenses that we paid for but we never got use of. And we write everything else off, because, guys, we're not talking about all that money here.
They were at eleven two fifty-one.
Look, I understand, I understand, I started this off, I'm, I'm preaching this to a group that went after fifty-five bucks, but I'm making a motion, I'm making a motion, we establish a price for the software of eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Did we not, uh, make and pass a motion for the nineteen?
Yes, we did.
We already passed that.
Okay, so that's all been done.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a second motion dealing only with software.
I got you, okay. And would you state that again for me to understand?
I would, I would like to make a motion that we establish a payout price for the software to be eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Do we have a second?
Can we second?
No, you can't. You're out of order.
Then I'll second.
I'll second the motion, but, uh, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I want to ask, uh, Michael and, uh, Mike, uh, do you agree with Riley that these software items are not capitalized as an asset, they're expensed? Have you ever capitalized a large software offering?
I have not.
Have you, Michael?
I've seen it done, but it's more of a question of counting than...
The reason I raise it is this, that's, I think, uh, Garrett raised the question about the accounting. If it's expensed, it, it's good for one year and it never appears in P and L and it never appears in the balance sheet, again, it's a one-year deal on the expense side. Now, the truth of the matter is, if we, if you talked about your two dollar, or you talked about two dollars and one dollar, we're gonna have to pay the two, because we're gonna have to buy it new, if it's something that we need. So, you, you know, there's two sides of this argument. If you expense it, it's a one-year deal. But if you have to buy a, the same software because you kept the one copy of it, then it costs us two dollars. So I, I just want to point that out because, you know, from an accounting point of view, it wants me, wants me to say we shouldn't get anything for software if, if it's past one year.
And I'll second that, so...
But from a standpoint of expenditure of funds, to the extent that we have valuable software that is not yet de, uh, is still expensed, then we have additional expense. Now, you may want to say, that's what you get for leaving. But, uh, you know, that we are going to incur that two dollars if it's something we need and we, they have the only copy of it. So that doesn't, uh, tell you how to vote, it's just a piece of information.
Mayor Sanders?
Let me, I just want to address the issue of capitalization of software. Uh, Jim, some of the items are annual licenses. And so you wouldn't capitalize them because you're gonna pay it every year. And so you really are gonna expense it. In the case of, let's say, like, uh, one of the items that's being talked about is the eighty, eight thousand seven hundred and ten, it was a license-based on use. If you, if you bought that initially for twenty PCs and you downsized, um, to ten, you have ten licenses that you're not using and you already expensed them and odds are you didn't capitalize that stuff because per PC, it's not really a very big item. And I doubt that auditors would say you're gonna capitalize something that is assigned to a, a unit price. The whole thing looks big, but the unit price is so small, they're gonna go, no, it's too much of an accounting to go back and say, I'm gonna take three hundred and thirty-five dollars and expense it over five years.
I agree.
You know, it's just, so, a, a, and I know that in one case, you, you'd say, well, I never got the use of all of those and I understand that issue. But I just wanted to address that capitalization issue, that why software is so much treated different. Part of that reason is that people no longer buy software, in one sense. You don't always own it, you license to use it. And that's what some of this is happening. You do own a copy of, uh, Office twenty-ten and it might be worth something if you had the ability to transfer the license. But in one sense, I understand, we can't transfer that license. And you got partly a discount because you bought a hundred units of it, would be my understanding. If you'd have bought twenty-five and we had bought seventy-five, the price would have been different, probably more. Although I didn't go price that out, but I'm looking at the guys that do this all the time. The price might have been higher because you didn't get a volume price of a hundred units. So, you know, that's just kind of where you are. I think, uh, Jim, I don't know if, did you ever get a second for Jim Thomas's?
He did, but I withdraw it.
Oh.
Yeah, you're, you're talking under discussion.
I understand, okay, well, that's fine.
I withdraw my second.
Here's, I mean, you keep mentioning, well, seventy-five, twenty-five, your cost would have been higher too to buy, you know, you, you benefited too. The whole, the whole thing dates back, it's done, so I'm not gonna, you know, say a lot about it, but, I mean, Mike Pastor can confirm this, we used about twenty-two, twenty-three percent of the IT, of all the cost. You benefited from the MUD donating fifty percent, twenty-seven extra percent over that. We looked at it thoroughly on the last CMO, what, four years ago or something? And we said, it's not really worth, you know, arguing about and based on what you said. We buy a service, it would cost us a little bit more, it costs you a little bit more, it benefits from the residents. Yes, it comes out of the same pocket as far as the residents, not including the Solana portion, but we each are separate entities, we each have our own budget to go by. And technically, we've been purchasing or paying for twenty-seven percent of your IT budget. And the reason, they keep saying, well, we chose to go, you know, separate. We chose to separate so we can run, you know, our entity efficiently. We were not getting IT support we needed. You all have witnessed it or, or been subject to the email issues, the backup issues. So it's not like we just said, well, let's separate. We separated for a business reason and that's why we separated.
Mr. Moss, I, I, I'm not gonna tell you how to run your meeting, but it, it's out of order. You cannot remove your second, you have to vote on the item that's properly before you and vote it up or down.
Okay.
You can ask your attorney the opinion.
Oh, thank you, we'll be happy to take a vote on it. Uh, we have a motion and a second before us, all those in favor. All those opposed? Motion dies, was not approval. Now, uh, my opinion, uh, I'm, I'm really tired of hassling over this thing. And I don't give a damn about the eight thousand dollars. Uh, the town can have the eight thousand dollars if that's a valid number. Uh, I don't care if we get anything for the software, I just want to get the thing settled and, and, and stop any disagreement or discussion, uh, that's going nowhere between the council and the MUD. And, uh, and that's just my opinion.
Uh, Jim?
Yes, sir.
When we originally met a couple weeks ago, the two IT committees, we were supposed to meet last Monday. And in one sense, I apologize to everybody here, because we could have hassled all this and about, limited about thirty-five, forty percent of this discussion because we would have had agreed upon figures coming back here tonight. And I really wish we had, and for some reason, that meeting had got canceled. We're obviously having, you know, a disagreement here. Why don't we have the same committee meet at a time that's convenient to all the parties? Let's come up with a number that we can agree on and then bring back to both bodies on the software. Because there's no sense of this going on and on. And, uh, I mean, I got, I got questions about the VMware because, you know, when we talk about splitting that, you can't split it. And, I mean, we got professionals on both sides here that, uh, can really give, give us, uh, some input about how to look at some of these things. And I, I kind of agree with Riley's thing, it's the renewable license, uh, you know, but I, my suggestion would be from, to both bodies, let's get the, uh, the volunteers back together again. Let's then come up with a number we can agree on and then bring back to, uh, both bodies and decide instead of us, this going on. I think you had, what, something scheduled at seven-thirty or... All right, now it's approaching eight o'clock and you have a long agenda tonight, so, uh, we, that, that would be my suggestion to both bodies.
Uh, Mayor, what, uh, what's the town's position on having the, the committee meet again?
I don't know.
Could I make, could I, just quickly? You know, I'd like to, along the same lines, uh, Director Toomey said, but on these, uh, software, I know I saw a list, it's probably been about eighty months ago or something, where you listed the servers that MUD specifically has, uh, I guess, programs on. And then the majority of them, the servers, the town or the police or someone have, like, uh, programs on, is that correct? There's some servers that we don't have anything on.
Correct.
Okay.
There are servers that you have nothing on.
Software related to those servers. That's what I would like to see a list, so I would like to motion, make a motion that the IT, uh, subcommittee get together with, uh, Michael and, uh, the town representatives and come up with a number that we can come back to the, uh, council and the MUD directors to come up with.
Okay, that's...
Software only, correct.
That's acceptable to us, so...
I made a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes, suggestion, please.
Go ahead.
Rather than call this steer body back together as a group, if the committee can agree on a number, can it please be taken to the respective board meetings and let them vote on it? And it doesn't require all twelve or thirteen or fourteen of us to come back for another meeting.
I would hope so, I thought that's...
That'd be acceptable.
I thought that was the objective before we got here tonight. And it didn't happen, so... Mayor, we have a committee, uh, we're all in favor, we have a...
You need to call the vote.
Uh, I did call a vote, I just spoke right in the middle of it.
I, I wanted to put that discussion in before the vote.
Let, let's go ahead and count it.
Called for the vote, please, all in favor, it is unanimous.
All right, council, what is your pleasure?
Well, I guess if we make a motion for a dollar amount, they've already requested that we...
We could solve the meeting issue if you just want to offer a dollar amount and we'll let them deal with it.
All right, let's try it, see if we can end it. Uh, I make a motion that we do not pay any dollar amount for the software, based upon what President Moss said and what Mayor Sanders says.
Do I have a second? All right. I'll second that to get it on the floor. We have a motion by Councilmember Lamont, uh, seconded by, by Mayor Sanders, that we not offer any dollar amount for the software. Any discussion?
Again, I go back to what Riley said. Uh, I, I fully understand, you know, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but I fully understand why the MUD walked away. Um, I own my own company, a lot of people in here own their own company. I would have kept you as a customer, but I only set policy. I don't do, I don't control the day-to-day operations. So I fully understand, and just like Riley said, if I lose a customer at my pallet business, it's, it's a hit. I take a hit. And so I, I agree with Riley, there is a number there and I, I think that we owe it to send it to the committee and let them decide.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, offering zero dollars for the software. All in favor of that motion, show your hands. Councilmember Lamont is for, all opposed, same sign. All right, uh, so the motion fails with Councilmember Lamont voting for. So now we are back to, uh, I will move that we continue our two-person committee to meet with the MUD's committee and staff to try to work out an agreeable number for software.
And I second.
So we have a motion by Mayor Sanders, a second by Councilmember Schaffner, to continue our meeting structure of myself and Councilmember Rowe with staff to meet with the MUD and to try to come up with a software figure. All in favor, show your hands. No opposed, it is unanimous, it is taken care of. Councilmember Moss, I would yield the chair to you if you'd like to adjourn your...
Can I ask you a question before you do that?
You can, but I've now given the chair to Councilmember Moss.
Mr. Moss, may I ask you a question before you shut us down?
Please, quickly.
Nick, I'm assuming and hoping that you will allow your representative to bring the number back to your council for a vote, rather than having to pull all of us back together again. You didn't say that.
I would agree to that, yes. That would, that would be the plan.
Thank you, Director Thomas, I, uh, I was going to say that unless they come back with a number, we're not gonna do this again. Okay, the MUD Board of Directors meeting is now adjourned at eight oh two.
All right, council, we are gonna go into recess at eight oh two, please be back in seven to ten minutes.
Seven days?